Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Lake Forest, District 67 Board of Education meeting for March 18th, 2014. We have a roll call. Please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Anderson.
Present.
Mrs. Fisher.
Present.
Mr. Shuler.
Here.
Mrs. Clemenson.
Here.
Mr. Borkowski.
Here.
Mr. Lemke.
Here.
Mr. Falker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, and good evening, and welcome to everyone. We are very glad you're here. So far.[51.62][51.62](Laughter). In the past few weeks, we've been fortunate to receive an unusual number of communications about the World Language Program at Cherokee School. The communications have overwhelmingly been passionate, polite, fact-based, and oriented towards finding solutions to the issues the district is working on. Thank you very much. We sincerely appreciate hearing from so many of you. We assume some of you will have some statements for the board this evening, and we look forward to hearing them as well. For those of you who haven't attended one of these meetings before, we have a process we follow which isn't necessarily designed around entertainment value, but we will get to the topics you're interested in. Specifically, Mr. Simic will address the issue of world language directly in his superintendent's report in just a few minutes. Before he does so, however, I wanted to offer some perspective on the challenges of managing our school district and how we as a board are continually trying to serve our community, to better serve our community. In 1599, a group of Roman Catholic priests from around Europe came together to publish a groundbreaking book called Radio Studiorum. The priests, part of the recently formed order which came to be called the Jesuits, wrote this book not about theology, but about how to operate a school. The book goes into great detail on such topics as curriculum, faculty, facilities, and more. Writing in the midst of the Renaissance, the book wrestles with such topics as how to deal with Aristotle's writings on science, which could be construed to be at odds with some church doctrine. There was never doubt about why these schools were called for. In the words of Saint Ignatius, the founder of the Jesuits, "The schools were to save souls." Before long, Jesuit schools rose up around Europe, and with several hundred of them in place by the 17th century. Today, over 400 years later, this book continues to have an influence on Jesuit education, and of course Jesuits operate schools in the U.S. and abroad, from the elementary level to some of our most prestigious colleges and universities. Only about 5% of Americans attend Catholic schools now, but they are a high-performing group, including four out of nine current Supreme Court justices. In the early 20th century, Italian physician Maria Montessori was operating a school for low-income children in Rome. Observing their behavior, she noticed that children seemed to have an innate ability to learn, concentrate, and even practice a level of self-discipline if they were placed in an environment which was natural for them. She felt that schools, with their emphasis on rote learning and memorization, failed to take advantage of the natural curiosity of children, losing out on an opportunity which could never be recaptured. She wrote extensively and developed a school which became a model for an educational movement. Early fans of her teaching philosophy included Henry Ford and Alexander Graham Bell. Graduates of schools she inspired today include the two founders of Google, the founder of Amazon.com, and countless others who've been successful in many creative and professional fields. Hundreds of Montessori schools operate around the world, including two here in Lake Forest and in Lake Bluff. History of public schools in the United States predates the founding of our nation. There were public schools in Massachusetts as early as 1647. Many of the founding fathers, perhaps most notably Thomas Jefferson, saw public education as absolutely essential for the success of the newly-formed nation called the United States. Jefferson listed his founding of the University of Virginia, along with authoring the Declaration of Independence and the Virginia Statute on Religious Freedom, as his three most significant accomplishments. Due to the work of Jefferson and countless subsequent educational professionals in the past 200 years, public schools have been a vital part of our nation's history and a significant reason why our democracy continues to thrive. But here's an important paradox. While Jesuit schools, or Montessori schools, and many others were founded around a particular educational philosophy, there's no educational philosophy around which public education in the United States is organized. We have a general feeling that democracies work better if people are educated. We have a general feeling that parents know what is best for their children, so we favor local control. We have sort of a general feeling that public education should meet a certain standard nationally, but we're very skeptical of too much involvement from the outside. To these feelings about why we have public schools, we also have ideas about how they should operate in the current world. We feel the world's getting more competitive, so we need to make schools more rigorous. We feel kids are stressed, so we add in initiatives for emotional wellness. They need to be more international, so we add in language programs. Not being tied to a particular educational philosophy can be seen as both a challenge and an opportunity. Because public schools are not linked to one school of thought, they have the ability to pick from the best, from different philosophies, and adapt as the world changes. However, that's easier said than done. In practice, what looks like adapting can just as often be chasing the latest educational fad or trend. Two months ago in this report, I listed some of these fads from the past 10 years. Without even Googling, I was able to come up with over two dozen of them in just a few minutes. Without discipline and proper governance, the freedom of being unencumbered by a particular philosophy can quickly degenerate into being untethered and ineffective. This problem is exacerbated by organizational dynamics. We all love local control, but in practice it means school districts are overseen by part-time amateurs who are prone to being co-opted by educational professionals. You see this in industry all the time, where regulators may become captives of the industries they're supposed to regulate. The same is possible here. In many school districts, not this one, the superintendent's the only person in town with a PhD, and the chance of any meaningful oversight by local community members is pretty remote. Even in Lake Forest, where the population is highly educated, it can be challenging to have a meaningful two-way exchange of views with educational professionals. The way in which a district works with educational professionals also presents many challenges. There's often a mismatch between the timeframe in which they think and the timeframe of the decisions they make. A new idea in education may take several years to roll out, followed by another five to 10 years to perfect, and then of course many more years to see if the long-term results are meaningful. Contrast this to a young education professional who may stay at a district for five or six years. What happens after she leaves? Is her idea abandoned? Is there a structure in place that allows it to carry on? Or is a totally new and contradictory idea put in place by the new administrator? What works best? Obviously, the answer is not for board members with no experience in education to try and do the job of the highly-trained professionals our district and others are honored to employ. But at the same time, a board that sits passive in the balcony and watches while a parade of experts passes through over the years, each with different expertise, interests, and beliefs to put their mark in a school system, isn't doing its job either. In my view, the only thing that works over the long term is a productive, engaged relationship between the board, the community, and the school district, with each doing their proper part to further the education of our students. Will this relationship be messy at times? Of course. Does it require each group to make some compromises? Sure. During periods of dispute, all participants should remember that despite their differences, they share many common interests. The reputation of a school system, the environment for its children, and the attractiveness of a community to new families may be at risk in such cases. If care is not taken, a sort of circular firing squad may develop, in which all parties end up being losers. These sorts of problems aren't new. They will always be present in some form in this district and others. Board members come and go. Administrators come and go. What endures, hopefully, is the community of Lake Forest. We've had public education here since 1859, when our community was founded. By way of perspective, that's only 33 years after the death of Thomas Jefferson. How can we govern this district in a way that honors that long tradition, and builds on it, and keeps it current and forward-looking? The answer to this question gets very close to what a school board should be doing, and why the work we are involved in this year, developing a mission and vision of the district, is so important. That work's being led by your board, along with Mr. Simic. It has included input from board members and the district, but there've also been many opportunities for community involvement. The process is designed to truly discern and understand our community's shared values, hopes for our children, the priorities we have for them, and the way in which our district can help them be realized. It's a very big task, but it's very important that we get it right. It's my sincere hope that this work will result in a sort of roadmap from the community to which current and future board members and administrators can look as they take their turn steering our district into a promising but unknown future. If we can do that, we will be able to say we've made a meaningful contribution to our public schools and to this community, which has provided so many things for all of us. That concludes my portion of the president's report. I'm also going to ask Vice President Leslie Fisher to comment on some issues that are on her mind as well. Leslie.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for sharing your insight with all of us here tonight. I also want to thank you for the countless hours that you selflessly devote to this role on a regular basis, and during this difficult time, even more so now. Thank you. I have prepared to share my thoughts with you tonight, and I want to be clear that these thoughts are my own. They may or may not reflect the opinions of the other board members that surround me. I want to begin by thanking all of those in attendance tonight, as well as those who may not be present, for your willingness to share your thoughts via emails, phone calls, face-to-face meetings, and even during encounters by chance. There have been many of you who have also attended vision meetings, Mandarin immersion parent meetings, and elementary school meetings. Thank you for your time. I especially want to recognize the members of our community who have given their valuable time to serve on our LASIK committee. We learned, discussed, deliberated, and presented ideas to each other. I have a better understanding of what you value as individuals, and the benefits of language exposure, FLESS programs, and immersion programs at an early age. Some have said that the administration's recommendation to halt Cherokee's Mandarin immersion program for incoming kindergarteners in the upcoming school year, agreed upon by the board at the February 25th Board of Education meeting, has ignited feelings and damaged the culture. I agree. While this is disconcerting, perhaps it is not wholly negative. While it is hard to see past the strong emotions and willful desires in this moment, a future will come, and it will come soon. These feelings of disbelief, disdain, acceptance, and even apathy have festered for some time now. Some have been more vocal, some more subdued. All matter. In the past four years, since the Mandarin immersion program's inception, we have seen a school divided. Approached by a well-meaning administration in the name of cognitive development, global awareness, and innovation, parents were excited, albeit reluctant, to enroll their children, their most precious individuals, in this new program. The program has not disappointed these families. The majority of these families are very happy in the program. Their kids are happy, excited about learning, and many have acquired expressive language skills, both verbally and written. Many parents also value the time spent learning about and celebrating the Chinese culture. As a trustee of our schools, there is nothing more gratifying than hearing from parents and students who are happy, engaged, and enriched by their school experience. The program has grown, as we know, potentially adding to evidence that it is headed in the right direction. The question has been posed repeatedly: Why would our administration and board members dismantle a program that is so successful? My simple answer to this very valid question is, it isn't working for many of our students and families in its current implementation. How do we know this? At this point, our two other elementary schools have very little interest in expanding the program. The Cherokee students who elect not to enroll in the program have a very small cohort of classmates, many smaller than the preschool environment from which they came. There have been families who have requested to transfer outside of Cherokee. There is no longer full-day kindergarten offered at Cherokee. Much has changed for these families, and I have yet to receive any input from any one of them that things have changed for the better. I am confident most everyone here in this room tonight can find common ground in respect to the feeling of having something taken away from you that you hold important. For some of you, it happened years ago. For others, the fear of loss has reared its head, especially throughout the last month. Many have questioned why neighboring communities, such as Highland Park and Vernon Hills, can offer Spanish immersion and Spanish dual-language programs, but we in Lake Forest just can't seem to figure it out. Having worked in both of these districts, the sheer number of students they have, eight elementary schools in Highland Park, 4,000 students in Vernon Hills District, coupled with their large number of Hispanic students, lends itself to the implementation of a more robust language program, with less negative unintended consequences. Barrington's Mandarin immersion program is slowly being implemented throughout its nine elementary schools. The divisiveness that a strand program, one which is traveling in its own unique direction, as our current Mandarin immersion program is, can create is all the more pronounced when numbers of students are fewer, and as we look to the future, fewer even more. It can be further exacerbated in a smaller school setting when there is no limit placed on the number of participants. Why did I agree with the administration's recommendation to pause the immersion program for the upcoming school year? Three reasons. First, multiple LASIK prototype groups recommended treating kindergarten as a welcome-to-school year without the offering of Mandarin immersion. The rationale for this recommendation indicated that first full-day school is a transition in itself, and that kindergarten should offer the opportunity for both Mandarin and non-Mandarin students and parents to commingle, encouraging lasting friendships and family connections at the onset of school. Second, we have taken nothing away from those students currently enrolled in the program. We have made a commitment to continue their Mandarin immersion experience throughout fourth grade. We will do this. Third, and lastly, the Illinois School Board Organization states the following: "It is our role and responsibility as a board member to seek first to understand the issues and components of a reform, and once understood, use time to an advantage by obtaining as much information as possible, from reform measure terminology to details of successes and challenges, before taking a position or making a recommendation. This pause is allowing for this time to thoughtfully consider, determine, and plan well." Will I consider the pause in Mandarin immersion kindergarten programming and reinstate the program for kindergarteners in the upcoming school year? At this point, no. The administration has not made the recommendation for reconsideration. As many of you are aware, the LASIK committee reconvened on March 10th, just a little over a week ago. Not one of the participants, including the participants who have students currently in the Mandarin immersion and/or incoming kindergartner's program, showed any support for maintaining the program in its current form. This observation, coupled with declining enrollment and the dissatisfaction expressed by many parents who have children in the English or traditional classrooms, solidify the notion that neither group wants the program to continue as is. So why initiate yet another cohort in the same form? The superintendent and administrative team are professionals employed by the board to investigate, study, recommend, and implement reform initiatives. They are currently engaged in this process, and if in the upcoming months they recommend a reinstatement of the kindergarten program for the upcoming school year based on the determination of our world language program, I would certainly consider supporting the reinstatement for the upcoming school year at that time. I am a believer in education. My passion, volunteerism, and professional life revolve around it. I support world language at an early age. I also recognize the value of language immersion. While I am disheartened, I am not discouraged. You are invested in your children's education. This is perhaps the strongest asset we have in our community. If this painful period of time forces every single one of us, community members, parents, Board of Education members, and administrators, to reflect on what should be emphasized and what are non-negotiables in our children's education, then I would argue that the current discomfort and uncertainty we are well worthwhile. Our administration is charged with a great task. I am grateful to our superintendent and our administrators, as they continue to listen open-mindedly, collect data, study successful world language programs, and prioritize our programming based on our vision as it is ever more clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And that concludes the president and vice president's report. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. Simic.
We are all very fortunate to live in a community that has seven such devoted school board members as part of the fabric of the community and the way that the district is organized, that we all elect seven people who serve as trustees of our community. And a trustee is a very important word in this context, because a trustee is charged not with doing what a particular group wants to do, but a trustee is charged with doing what is best for the whole, for all, for the entire community. And each school board member is charged with that duty, to not represent some but all. And it's not an easy task, and I can tell you that we're all very fortunate to have these folks serve us in that capacity. So what I want to do tonight is, I want you to listen to me, and I am going to be, and I have been going around the community, making sure that I am listening to you. And so this back and forth is very meaningful, is very important, is very important to me as I go around, that you come and that you participate. And it's really great to see so many faces that I know and recognize from various meetings that we've had already. So there are three different parts of what I want to talk about tonight. The first is a review of the Mandarin program. Second is a look at the kindergarten decision, and third is a look at the world language program review and the rationale for that. So Mandarin overview, a little bit of background first. A strand, as Mrs. Fisher mentioned earlier, is a class that works, typically one single strand, that works its way through in a building with other types of programming in it. A partial immersion school is where kids spend part of their day immersed in a language. An immersion school is where they spend 100% of the time. A partial immersion is where they spend 50% of the time. Our district has what is close to a partial immersion program. So the name, it's kind of a lot to say actually, or close to partial immersion program. That's why it's called an immersion program. This is something that we have all struggled with, I think, and what brings many of us here tonight, perhaps all of us here tonight. I've been an advocate, as many of you know, of the Mandarin program from the beginning. There are $10 trillion worth of wealth that are expected to be generated in Asia. That's China, and India, and other parts of Asia. There's also a competitive advantage that American kids have if they speak the language. There's a very tiny population of Americans currently that have any sort of fluency. It's innovative, interesting people sign up, and when I interviewed for the job, our board members will tell you that I said I would definitely have my kid in the program. What I can tell you is, whatever we start around here, sign your kid up, because interested and eager people will be a part of it. And that's just good energy. It's also rare to have a product that so many people really, really love. In this case, our customers are early adopters, and very frankly, we want to encourage more of that behavior rather than discourage that behavior. Our Mandarin parents also recognize that they're really happy and that the program is not perfect, and there are a number of different challenges that we face in a variety of different ways that we're going to need to work our way through in the future. The kindergarten decision, the second issue up. From the very outset, there was overwhelming demand for the program. The message was, when we said we were going to roll it out a year from now, the word was, "Look, we want you to start that, and start that immediately. Don't wait a year, get it going instantly." And what happened was that created a lack of time to plan. Coinciding with that, unfortunately, is a decline in our enrollment, which led our Mandarin program, from its popularity and its growth, to wind up outpacing an English program. In first grade, we have only 12 and 11 students in our English program now. In kindergarten, we have 14. So three reasons prompted my recommendation, our recommendation as an administrative group, to put, place the kindergarten program on hold. First, we needed a decision to enroll our kindergarteners. We didn't want to repeat those last two years here and here with English students. And very, very importantly, we needed time to process ideas. We're in the midst of a mission and vision and goal process, and that may sound like, "Oh, that's window dressing." It's not. This is a big deal, and this organization hasn't done it for 15 years. And it really does chart the future for us. And as odd as it might sound to say, "Hey, the timing of this is pretty good," it certainly has engaged people to think about what is important to them. And that input shared with the board is a very valuable thing. I want to talk about the 14 in kindergarten right now. There really aren't 14, because we had a number of students that transferred out, because they didn't want to be part of another little tiny cohort. A number of other parents private schooled, and as a superintendent, I am saddened every single time somebody doesn't look at us as their first choice for school, for their child. Others, anecdotally, looked at homes in other parts of the district. We also know that some people found homes in the area because they wanted to be part of the program. The problematic class sizes of 12 and 11, I'll get into in just a moment, and declining enrollment, how that plays a factor. We had two classes of Mandarin and two classes of English. These are the number of sections right here, and as the first year, this grade four, there is, these are all English sections right here. Grade three, we have two and two. And this is where our problems began to arise, right here with declining enrollment. And now, we've got a really small group of students in our English program. So our Mandarin program has now outgrown significantly our English program. The 14 students day, and why that's a big deal, and why it's really a big deal to me as a superintendent, because I wouldn't want my child as one of those 14, and part of my responsibility is to treat those kids like they were my kids. They travel with the same group of 14 over five years, and we've heard many times, just mix them up, put them in different places, and we've been doing that. The problem with that is there is no one that agrees that that is an age-appropriate thing to do with first graders. And if it were such a good idea, we would be doing it at Sheridan and Everett right now, and we don't. We have many interventions that we do with many kids, every kind of kid, every age kid, but particularly with little kids. They can't articulate an S, or they can't count by fives, or any number of other things. They don't recognize letters or words and so on, and we intervene for those kids. And when they move in predictable clumps of 15 or 20, it's really easy to do interventions for those kids. When they are spread, in the interest of mixing them socially, what happens is now they're in different parts of the school, and we have to hire different people, either to give up their lunch hours, or work with them after school, or just simply hire more staff in order to intervene for them. And it gets more complicated when kids get into third grade, because now explore starts, and now you have an even smaller group. And they're going to spend large parts of their day with even fewer students yet, and even though low-class size is a great thing, there is a point of diminishing return, where the conversation, you don't have enough stimulating conversation partners to make things work, and you also run the risk of a very problematic cocktail, if you will, which we have right now in one of our buildings. We have at Sheridan, I was in the classroom the other day, we've got boys, a huge group of boys, and there are four girls in there, and the dynamic in there is really, really different, because there are, I think, 16 boys and four girls, or something like that. And what happens if those kids don't mix well? And of course, you get to a point and say, "All right, hey, why are we doing all this? Why are we working so hard to make this program work?" All these various things lead us over and over and over again to come back to talking about a language-focused school, or an immersion school, or what have you. But there are issues that go along with that. There are continuing perceptions, whether perceptions or realities, of kids that there are haves and have-nots in the Mandarin program. There is also an idea of rationing, that we would restrict the number of students that participate in the Mandarin program, and this has gotten a lot of advocacy, and there are problems with that. Part of that is that perception of haves and have-nots. The other part is now you also have one strand of kids working their way through, and we can have the same issues with the Mandarin kids that we'd have with the English kids. The continuing divisiveness, unfortunately, and I want to say thank you, at this point at least in the conversation. at least in the conversation, we're all friends in here, and I hope it stays that way. These are difficult issues, and I really appreciate your patience as we work through those. There's an inability for Mandarin parents, a struggle for them to celebrate and not feel badly about celebrating the things that they're proud of. And I think that this is an ongoing thing, that kids wind up, there's a perception at least, that kids have a very different experience in the building. Kelly Jackson will tell us that the building is actually running incredibly well, and your staff is working their hearts out to make everything work for us and for your kids. There's also a benefit of a common unifying experience for students, staff, and parents to have a language-focused school. Everybody participates in the same thing, and they have a certain number of things in common. So things that are on the table and off the table. There are, right now, six different options, and some of them are viewed much more favorably. One language for all, hardly anybody likes that idea frankly. Two languages, people like it. Three, language-focused, it's the topic of increasing conversation, I would say at this point. Option four is similar to option one. One of the things that we hear both from Everett and Sheridan is, we don't, we don't want that. That's not going to work for us. Five, continue what we've been doing, as Mrs. Fisher said, there is no one that says, hey, just stay the course and gut it out, saying that they think that's a good idea. And option six, there's a problem with that, and that is, we are going to be forced to make some decisions down the road as well. Every one of them has an issue. Every single one of them. And I get the nice job of making a recommendation on what to do soon. So I can tell you what we're learning. We're learning that there's not a lot of interest in one language for all, partially because of the cost. There's a cost factor associated with it. The two languages, we probably can't pull that off. That's option two, it's going to cost roughly half a million dollars, and we would hamstring every single thing that we do in the interest of doing those two languages. So all other programs, all interventions, math, science, history, English, the dog would be wagged by the tail of the foreign language. There's also very broad resonance about the value of Latin, and we hear that over and over and over again. We also have very interesting demographic and generational differences. The parents of kindergartners are viewing language instruction in a different way than parents say my age. Young children, the acquisition of foreign language is more of a priority for them. There's also no likely impact of expanding immersion on the teaching staff. This is a very important topic here. One of the questions is if we added a Spanish immersion program to the mix, and it's a popular idea very frankly, and one that we're hearing quite often. One of the worries is we would replace all these English teachers doing that, and we actually have 13 retiring K-4 teachers in the coming years, so we don't believe that we would lose any of our current English-speaking staff because of that. So we wouldn't have to lay people off to expand that program, which is a good thing, and we work with our union on this, and they see this the same way that our administrators do. We also hear that we don't want you to begin an all-new program suddenly for students K-4. Bang, overnight, we change everything. And that any new language programming, for example, that's Spanish at Everett and Sheridan, would need to roll up. So you wouldn't start it all at once, you would start it in a certain grade and allow it to grow year by year. Very interesting thing, and a large number of our kids in preschool are having exposure, all of them that we've seen so far have exposure to Spanish. And for incoming families, the interest in Spanish is about double that of Mandarin. We have, we've done a number of surveys that support immersion, and they also support the traditional English programming. The current kindergarten respondents said roughly 15 would say of our, of our current kindergarten, folks, these are not the incoming kindergarten, but, but parents with a kindergartner currently at Cherokee. 15% English, 59 would choose Mandarin, and 11% say they would choose Spanish. So what in part this says is if what people have, they like, and that's certainly good news. Everett and Sheridan responses show much more interest in Spanish than in Mandarin. And also, we also know, because we've done this in the past, that the program, the immersion program is as popular as it is, and we have not promoted it in any way. And if we did, we are confident, whether that's Spanish immersion or Mandarin immersion, that our numbers would expand if we went out and promoted that. The World Language Review Program, the World Language, we are looking at what to do with our World Languages, because we've got an issue that we see on the horizon, and we want to look at it now so that it's not a crisis in five years, if you will. What this, what this means is that our current eighth-grade class, I'll meet back up, we have 120 students, roughly speaking, fewer students in kindergarten right now than in eighth grade. And what that means is that the demand for World Language is 15 different sections that we offer for eighth grade. There's 15 teachers that teach a given period with those students. And if nothing changed for the current group, we would need, by the time they're in eighth grade, we would need only six. That's a big loss, and something that's very concerning to our foreign language teachers, because I think we do a really good job with foreign language frankly. Got really committed people. One of the reasons to look at some of the different options that we are, which is starting foreign language younger, are the benefits that come from that. Our current program is, we begin it in fourth grade, and kids' reach was known as novice high, and some of them wind up a little bit higher than that. But in general, a novice can get through rudimentary things by the time they're done with eighth grade. You compare that to a program that begins in, in first grade, and what intermediate, mid means, the difference there is that almost any social interaction they have, they can navigate that, and they can do a pretty good job. They might not always get it right, it won't be perfectly fluid every time, but they can navigate a lot of different situations. And you compare that to immersion, and the difference is tonal quality and fluidity. It is fast and it is easy if, for kids that are immersed in the language and get a lot of language instruction. All these things, foreign language is, is nothing more than time on task. You have to spend a lot of time learning it to become proficient, and the longer you do it, the better you get. And so by beginning a program early, especially when you know that you've got, you're going to reduce the number of foreign language sections you have anyway, what we're talking about is rolling the problem, the, the, one of the things we're looking at is allowing a program to roll up. So we would begin, for example, Spanish in first grade. And so you started Spanish at Everett and Sheridan, or wherever we wanted to start it. And it would start in first grade, the following year, you would have that in first grade and second grade, and then it would roll its way up. The language choices, so Latin or French or whatever language we would choose, the language choices would expand in fifth grade. So that's one of the things that we're taking a close look at, again, because we see for this group of kids, we're going to need a lot fewer language teachers anyway. So plan ahead. So what is next for us? I'm going to spend time meeting with Mandarin teachers, also meet with English teachers, have a meeting tomorrow, you probably know, many of you anyway, a meeting at Cherokee, we'll go over some of these same things, and that's a listening meeting and a answer question meeting. We will also probably wind up having, as necessary, a phased decision. We don't want to make a decision earlier than we need to. The Cherokee decision is something we certainly want to make as soon as possible, and that would be by April 22nd. So we've had a lot of meetings already, we will have more, and we want to have a recommendation to the board by April 22nd. And that completes the superintendent's report. Mr. Anderson, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board on any item of their choosing? Thank you.
I'm going to jump right in.
Thank you. I'm going to just read a couple guidelines here, if I, if I could. We'd ask people to limit their, their talks to three minutes. Everyone has a right, within reason, to be heard respectfully. People will not be allowed to speak a second time until everyone who wishes to speak has done so. We'd ask public comment not to be redundant, and that all comments be directed to the board and not the audience. To provide accurate responses, detailed questions posed to the board during public comment will be listened to and taken under advisement. Public is always welcome to meet with school officials to receive information, discuss ideas, or express concerns. And I'd ask people before they speak to just state their name and address. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Anderson. We've had one request for a longer participation from one group of people, and we have agreed to do that. The three people will speak for nine minutes.
Okay. Yeah, mine will be four minutes and 40 seconds, and then the other two will be 30. I had time today.
Fantastic, thank you. Go ahead, just please state your name.
So my name is Michael Loykano, and we live at 305 Scott Street. Good evening, Mr. Simic and District 67 Board members. My wife Susan and I have a daughter at Cherokee in second grade in Mandarin immersion, and another daughter who will be an incoming kindergartner. I've been asked by a group of immersion parents to make a statement on their behalf in response to your recent decision to eliminate Mandarin immersion as an option for next year's kindergartners. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your openness in recent weeks to our concerns and your willingness to engage with us to identify solutions for the program going forward. Many of us fear that your recent decision is the first step in the phasing out of immersion in Lake Forest. We are concerned about how this decision was made, the negative impact it has on the particular cohort of children, and the instability and uncertainty it brings to the district overall. To date, our petition requesting that this decision be reversed has been signed by nearly 600 Lake Forest residents. Many of those residents are here in support of us tonight. As we all know, three years ago, District 67's Mandarin immersion program was launched in order to provide our elementary school children with a comprehensive approach to learning a second language. This was an exciting choice for many of us. Research shows that immersion education is the most effective way to acquire a second language, and offers many data substantiated cognitive benefits for young minds as well. That immersion is cost-neutral, requiring no additional taxpayer money, has made it particularly attractive. The immersion style, and most importantly, the use of native speakers, allow our children to understand tone, inference, and body language in another culture, all critical elements of fluency in a second language. You will briefly hear more about this when Stu Kerr comes up to speak in a little while. Those of us who have enrolled our children in this program since 2011 have been the pioneers, willing to take a risk with a new program. By every measure, our expectations have been exceeded. The program has offered our children a truly innovative educational experience that is preparing them to be globally-minded, flexible thinkers in a culturally diverse world. We have watched as our children learn their core subjects in Mandarin. We have been inspired by the exceptional teaching staff, both Mandarin and English, and remain grateful to our principal, Kelly Jackson, and the administration for their efforts to refine the program and support our children's growth. Any new program will lead to issues that we need, that need to be resolved. We recognize and understand that adding the immersion program led to unintended consequences at a time when the district faced other challenges, like declining enrollment and leadership changes. We applaud the district for its efforts to work with parents across Lake Forest to develop a vision for education in this community. Naturally, those of us with children in the program believe that immersion is exactly the kind of forward-thinking, challenging program the district should be offering as a choice for families. We are encouraged by recent discussions about continuing and possibly expanding the program, and we are aware and strongly support the LASAC committee's recommendations. To be clear, we don't have a particular bias towards one solution or another. We just want to see immersion included in whatever solution the district recommends. And while we appreciate your efforts to review and plan for the program moving forward, we don't agree that next year's kindergarten class has to be sacrificed for you to do so. Your decision delays indefinitely the known benefits of immersion learning for this incoming class of children. There seems to be no logic in eliminating or suspending a program for the very age group that stands to benefit the most. If we delay the start of immersion for this cohort, and then potentially reduce Mandarin instructional minutes in third and fourth grade, as the district is currently considering, we risk proficiency outcomes. Parents won't enroll their children in a program that won't produce results. We believe that your decision ignores the overwhelming support of immersion among incoming kindergarten parents. It threatens the tuition income of dozens of families willing to withdraw their full-day deposits to enroll in a Language Stars program to compensate for the canceled kindergarten year. At a time of declining enrollment, it causes families to consider leaving the district altogether because their first choice for kindergarten is no longer valuable, available. We are concerned with how this decision was made. We are concerned about its poor timing, made nine days prior to the close of the kindergarten registration, after many district families had already made their decisions regarding what school and program they wanted for their children. So we respectfully ask you to please reverse this decision and allow incoming kindergartners to register for Mandarin immersion this fall. We can't afford to eliminate this option for the percentage of families who believe in the program, have seen it in action, and want a language-rich curriculum as a choice for their children. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
My name is Terrell Lawton, I live at 370 Washington Road in Lake Forest. My wife Deborah and I have a third grader in the Mandarin program and an incoming kindergarten, incoming kindergarten student. We thank you, we thank the members of the school board, the District 67 administrators, and the teachers for all you do for our children. As you continue to evaluate the future of the language acquisition program, we ask that you consider what is best not only for the Cherokee families, but all families across the district. In making a decision like this, it's important that we incorporate the facts in our thinking. The data overwhelmingly demonstrate that there is very high demand for the immersion program and more language acquisition opportunities. The percentage of students enrolled in the Mandarin immersion program at Cherokee has increased in every successive class. In the program's first year, our current third-grade class, 43% of the students enrolled in the Mandarin immersion program. In the current kindergarten, 75% of the students enrolled in the immersion program, 75%. This is an amazing success and a clear indicator of the program's importance to the community. Programs that's successful are generally not suspended, but expanded. We should be investing more in similar programs. No statement is stronger than that of an actual commitment. Three out of four of your constituents in the Cherokee kindergarten are willing to make a multi-year commitment with their child's education. If we look at the enrollment percentage of the Mandarin immersion program across the district, we see similar results. District-wide Mandarin enrollment by grade grew from 16% to its current level of 28%. The program continues to grow and thrive in spite of the perceived tension and division surrounding the program. Further, the majority of the parents at the Cherokee Elementary District for the most recent class are choosing the Mandarin program. By reviewing the Cherokee class roster, you'll find that 37 of the 56 Cherokee kindergarten students live in the current Cherokee boundaries. Out of those 37 students, 14 are choosing the traditional curriculum, and 23 are enrolled in the Mandarin immersion program. Nearly two-thirds of the Cherokee neighborhood school kindergarten parents are choosing the immersion program. It has become clear that the district is suffering from declining enrollment. In that type of environment, we should be looking to programs that draw families and children into our district. Our district's very own website states the following. "The school district, the school district is recognized both statewide and nationally for its innovative instructional practices and solid educational programs. The combination of this vision, the broad community adoption of the immersion program, and most importantly, the needs of our children to compete in a global environment must drive the future direction that we choose." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Stu Kerr, and I'm a Lake Forest resident. I'm at 26 East Lewis in Lake Forest. I started my Mandarin program as a senior in high school, the first year that it was offered at Lake Forest High School. And I enjoyed it so much that I continued to study it at Middlebury, and eventually I studied in Hangzhou, China. And for me, I really struggled early on with two aspects of Mandarin Chinese, which I think is pretty common, the two that I'm about to raise, intonation, pronunciation, and grammar. And the two immersion programs in which I studied in, at Middlebury, really helped me make two significant progress in two of, two areas. Particularly, the immersion program allowed me to, my thought process to function completely in Chinese. I was able to understand I was able to understand Chinese grammar and vocabulary in context, rather than trying to translate it in my mind from English into Chinese and vice versa. Secondly, my intonation greatly improved because I was constantly exposed to the language. I was able to take the things that I've heard every single day and then incorporate it into my own speaking capabilities. Yet despite the great strides I took in Mandarin while involved in these immersion programs, I feel I will likely never gain the same degree of fluency as an individual who started taking Chinese at a young age. And furthermore, I think part of the great thing of immersion programs is it's not only -- they're not only beneficial to one's development of language skills, but also crucial in the development of a broader perspective for their students. I'd like to share a brief example of my experience, if I can, to convey this point. When I was studying Hangzhou, when I was a junior in college, I went to lunch one day by myself in between classes, and a Chinese man, a complete stranger, came up to me on the street. And he tried to speak to me in this really broken English, and I had no idea what he was saying. So I felt confident enough through these immersion programs to speak to him in Chinese. And I said, you know, "We can speak in Chinese," and I invited him to sit down with me. And I had about an hour-long conversation with this man, a complete stranger, and we connected on a very personal level. We talked about politics, we talked about cultural differences, we even talked about our family lives. And I think that that moment will always stick out in my memory as a product of the great immersion programs that I was able to participate in. It really points, in my mind, to the larger importance of learning a language, and that self-fulfillment. I can't imagine how I would have -- it's just incredible to imagine that I was able to accomplish that. And secondly, a deep connection with a different culture and its people. I think that really only comes to light through immersion programs. And lastly, it creates a degree of self-awareness. I was able to reflect on myself, my culture, my background, as I talked to this man and learned about his culture, his background, his family life. And I think those are invaluable lessons and invaluable to my development, and realistically, I wouldn't have been able to accomplish that in any other way besides through these immersion programs. So I bring up this story just to convey my hope that both the administration and the Board of Education understand what an incredible gift you are giving these children to be able to start studying this language at such a young age and to continue it throughout their entire development. And while my immersion experience in many ways embodies the benefits of an immersion program, I think this experience, because it came later in life, is very different. I can only imagine the incredible impact the Mandarin program in District 67 will have on these students as they grow with the program, they learn as they develop. I'm so envious of that experience, to be honest. And I feel confident that the students in the District 67 Mandarin program will one day enjoy the same benefits that I've enjoyed because of their early immersion experience and because of that program. So I would ask you to please not deprive them of that opportunity. 谢谢你们，晚安. Thank you and good night.
Thank you very much.
My name's Elena Daniel. I live at 10 East Lewis Avenue, and I am currently in the process of purchasing a new home in the Cherokee District. My two daughters are in kindergarten and second grade. I've been a resident of Lake Forest for seven years, and since today, I've loved every aspect of our community. After reviewing the various options that you're currently looking at, I was quite shocked and surprised. We had a parent approach us at the spring concert and basically told us not to purchase our new home because our child would no longer be able to attend Cherokee. As you can tell, that was very shocking to us and very disappointing because we never even saw what the LASIK Committee had proposed, that a magnet school would be even possible for the Lake Forest community. So I'm asking you today, the board members, and also parents, to petition against converting one of the schools into a magnet school. We deserve a public English education, and I'm here today to support that. I'm not here to say that I'm definitely not anti-immersion. I have many immersion friends, family members, my children play with them. I'm a Girl Scout leader at Cherokee, love the girls. But I'm asking you today to please not consider that as an option. The community of Lake Forest deserves a traditional English education taught at every public school. We deserve the right to preserve our teachers' jobs that have taught in our school systems for years and has made the school district what it is today. In addition, every child deserves an English education based at their home district. I do not want my child to bust. I do not want my child to have to be shuttled throughout the Lake Forest community in order to learn. So therefore, I'm asking you today to please take that off consideration. Please focus instead on improving the traditional English curriculum. Continue to fix the Mandarin program at Cherokee School. And if the board does move forward with the world language, I ask that you provide that to all students in all of our elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I just point out that my family are not calling me? This is actually the timer that we're using.
Our esteemed clerk, Eileen, is keeping track of the time of statements, and so when you hear that tone, that means that the three-minute period has expired. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carlos Cardona, 1002 Timber Lane in Lake Forest. I didn't write a speech tonight. I wasn't sure I was going to be speaking, but I just thought I'd come up here and talk from the heart. I did my fancy speech last year at the school board, and in case one or two of you haven't heard my opinion about the Mandarin program, I will make a couple of points about I'm a Cherokee parent with two kids in the English program. I am a product, just a little background, of a Jesuit education in Cuba, and then I was in an immersion program in the third grade in Miami. So as part of the LASIK Committee, the idea of immersion for all seemed to me to be a really good idea, a really good way for our kids to learn language. But I realize that not every kid might benefit from that approach, and that the school has to make room for people who will not benefit from the immersion for all approach, or even from the two languages at a school approach. There are two basic reasons why I don't support the Mandarin immersion program at Cherokee. The first is, as I've stated before, for the board, it's a, what I consider a moral or ethical reason, that the Lake Forest School District not take money from the Chinese government to fund our Mandarin program. This is not a good source for us to be funding, as the first gentleman said, a revenue, a cost-free program. It's not good to be looking to the Chinese government, a totalitarian dictatorship, for these funds. So that said, now that we've got over that, the other reason is one that I discovered during the readings for the LASIK Committee, which is that I believe that Mandarin is actually the wrong language. While immersion and the study of language being a great thing, Mandarin is the wrong choice for several reasons, but the most important to me are it does not use our Western character set. And as a result, you don't get the benefits that you get when you've studied French, or German, or Italian, or Portuguese, and these are all languages that use our Western character set. When you study Mandarin, or Hebrew, or Arabic, you learn that language, and you can write in that language, and you haven't learned half of all the other languages by association because they also use this Western character set. So it's a poor choice in terms of allowing you to learn a broad spectrum of languages. And if you talk about the market, if you add up the Italian market with the French market with the Spanish market with the Portuguese market, and you learn some of those languages, which are easier if you've learned one, that's the largest market in the world. Thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I am not a public speaker, but I'm here because I feel very strongly about some of the recommendations. My name is Christina Friedy, and I am a District 67 parent with three kids at three different schools. I have a fifth grader at Deer Path, I have a third grader at Cherokee in the traditional program, and I have transferred my kindergartner to Everett. Let me just say, it's been amazing. My kindergartner, who is behind, is reading. So thank you, Everett. What I wanted to say is I was on the LASIK Committee, and I guess I'm here tonight because -- not because I haven't expressed my opinion to Mr. Simic, I've expressed my opinion to the board as a parent of someone in the traditional program, but I'm here tonight because I am a LASIK member. I'm on the committee. And I'm not here to make friends tonight, so I'm just going to say what I think. I feel like the, for me, when I look at the recommendations, I'm shocked that that's what we came up with. I'm shocked. And the likelihood of Cherokee becoming an all-Mandarin school is extremely disappointing to me. I didn't know this is where we were at. When I first started LASIK, I thought, you know, I'm willing to give my time and energy, late nights, because I feel like there's a problem at Cherokee, and I don't want to just complain, I want to be part of the solution. So I go to LASIK Committee, and I'm given article after article of, you know, research-based saying that immersion is the best way to teach a language. You don't have to convince me. I totally agree with that. As a teacher for 15 years, I understand best practices. My concern was that I didn't feel hurt on the LASIK Committee. I feel like it was imbalanced, and I know Andy has stated that, or someone, I don't know if it was Andy, he might have stated that anybody could have joined the LASIK Committee, or that there weren't enough volunteers. I know specifically of two very vocal friends who were turned away. I guess the LASIK Committee was led by a lovely, lovely woman, but she had pioneered a Mandarin program in her own district. This is her passion. So she was leading the LASIK Committee, and, you know, when I expressed my concern, she kept saying, you know, "Trust the process, trust the process." So I kind of, I just sat back and did. I said as much as I, you know, felt comfortable with, but bottom line is, I don't like what we came up with. I don't feel represented. I don't feel Cherokee is represented. And so that's why I'm here. The LASIK Committee, I thought the focus was going to be on changing and helping the problems at Cherokee. With Mr. Simic's report tonight, I do feel listened to. I saw many of my points up there. But I still have a third grader who is having just an average education. Now, the positives from the LASIK Committee is I learned a ton, and I read the research. I'm not sure if they've convinced me with the small amount of research, but I do understand that immersion is the way for kids to learn best. I understand that. I also appreciate Mr. Simic stating that what we are doing isn't actually immersion. It's almost there, but it's not quite even partial immersion. So I guess my proposal tonight is, what I've learned from the LASIK Committee, is that kids need to start at a younger age. They need to be engrossed in a language to learn it properly. And all these things we know, so if this is truly best practices, I feel very strongly that we should offer this to all of our students. And not sacrifice their math skills, or not sacrifice their core subjects, but give them the opportunity to learn a language.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there other members of the community who would like to address the board?
Thank you. My name's Jim Kurayaku. I'm at 454 Beverly Place, and I served on the LASIK Committee, and I want to thank all of you for the hard work that you've put in. I can really see that this has been a very contentious issue and that you're working really hard to find a good solution. I, too, am bilingual, although I kind of grew up the old-fashioned way. I learned English and was yelled at in Greek. But I think, I am also a teacher at the university level, so I tend to focus on evidence. And what I didn't see up here from Mr. Simic's presentation was what is the best way to teach, to improve the cognitive processes of our children? What is the best practice? And I think that's what we should focus on. What is the best way we can teach our children? It may be one program, it may be another, but who can benefit? How can we help all the kids in the best way? And I think including a language process in there, a language program in there, would just be incredible. What's going to happen if we cancel the program? And I fear that you're going to see that this cohort of kids that have gotten immersion in Chinese are going to skyrocket in their scores, and we're going to look back and say, "Why did we destroy such a very good program?" As for, where's Carlos? Carlos, my friend Carlos. We served on the committee together. I see your point, Carlos, but I also think there's an added advantage to learning something that's different from the standard Latin language. And I can only speak from my son's experience. I have two sons, one's a senior in high school, and one's a sophomore in high school. Both of them take Mandarin. Next week, my oldest is going to China in the exchange program. That's how strongly he feels about Mandarin. My middle child has a reading disorder in English. It's actually very interesting because he has a very hard time decoding standard English, but he's the best reader in Mandarin because he understands that, and that's what he's learning it. So why should we take that away from him? That's it.
Thank you very much. That's very interesting. Are there other members of the community who would like to address the board? Walking up doesn't count in your three minutes, so take your time. Don't rush.
Hi, my name is Laura Collins. I live at 100 Marion, and I have two students at Cherokee, both in the traditional program. My oldest is in third grade, and my middle child is in second grade, and I have an incoming child. I'm not sure if I will send him next year or the following year. Very concerning to me are several things with the Mandarin program, and that is how it's affected Cherokee. I don't like that my third-grade class is too large. I don't like that my traditional child is not given enough focus on learning the things that he needs to learn in the English language. I have no problem with, I have many friends in the immersion program. I hate the way it's affected Cherokee, and I am very dissatisfied with the way that the board and the school district has chosen to ignore the traditional students and the impact that it's made on our families. The fact that my child coming into kindergarten may not have a traditional option is just terrible to me. I'm a taxpayer, and I deserve the right. I'm a taxpayer, and I deserve the right. This magnet school situation is, to me, should not even be on the table. I moved out of the city. If I wanted to have a magnet school program, I would have stayed in the city of Chicago. I moved to Lake Forest to have an option where my child could go to a neighborhood school. I work full-time, I don't have time to drive my kids all over town getting to school and then getting to work. So I would like the magnet school option to be removed, and I would like you to consider doing something so that Cherokee is not the only school affected by Mandarin, because I do not choose it for my family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Other members of the community who would like to address the board? There's always a few who want to pause or something. Okay, thank you very much for your comments. I can tell you, speaking for, I think, the entire board, that they are very much appreciated. And all your comments are, will be taken into consideration as the board and the district continue to work on this very important issue over the next few weeks. I'm going to deviate just briefly from the agenda now, because I've never read Robert's Rules of Order, so I can do that. And we have a very passionate, hard-working board here, and there may be a couple of them who would like to make comments. And let me just say in advance, whether or not they make a comment does not have anything to do with how passionate or hard-working they are, it's really just if they're interested in speaking to the board this evening. So let me ask the group here if there are anything that they would like to say about the issues that we've discussed. Mr. Burkowski.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I want to thank each of you for being here tonight. I know many of you representing both sides of the issues, some of you for many years. Some of you, again, on both sides, I consider very close friends, and others I'm just meeting for the first time. Some of you I don't know at all, but I care about what you think, too. All of you are here for one reason, because you care, and I thank you very much for that. The fact that you care about your schools and your children's education is a wonderful thing, and we shouldn't take it for granted. Amidst the turmoil and the different perspectives, I actually celebrate that. I'm glad that everyone is here tonight. We now have an engaged community that cares about education, and even when the debate turns ugly, and it has a few times, I still take great joy in that. I try to be careful not to speak for other board members at these meetings, as I'm one of seven, but when I say I'm trying my best to listen to each and every one of you, I'm pretty sure that's true for everyone at this table. I'm attempting to respond to every one of your emails, and I've received a few hundred. I may not be perfect, but I actually do read them all, and I'll continue to try my best to listen. I want to share a little bit of background about my personal situation, and a little bit about what I think I've heard, and finally, a little bit about what's in my head. I have two third graders at Cherokee, and when I'm asked about them, which happens almost daily, what I say is, "I have two third graders at Cherokee." I don't introduce myself as a parent of two Mandarin kids, or as a parent of two non-Mandarin kids. I simply have two third graders. Sometimes I receive strange looks for that, sometimes I receive angry looks for that answer, because it seems like the standard introduction process at Cherokee has changed to now include whether our kids are in the program or not. I don't think labeling is healthy, so I don't do it. I encourage each and every one of you to consider that as well, since labeling has nothing to do with our kids receiving world language instruction, or math instruction, or reading instruction. We label to point out our differences. Our common ground is that we all have students that we care about. Because of my refusal to label, and also maybe that my kids are not in the program, there's some people that feel I'm against the program. Unfortunately, my relationships with a few of you have even been negatively affected, and that said. Division in our community becomes especially sad when people label and/or make assumptions about each other that are incorrect. I ran an election campaign for this position, and one of my core values was transparency. I'm painfully aware that some folks now think I'm not transparent. As I wrote in a recent email, "This situation isn't about a lack of transparency, rather it's about finding a good answer." And a month ago, we didn't have a good answer, and we still don't tonight, but we're getting there. I know some of you feel differently, so I'm really thankful to have an opportunity to talk to you tonight. Here's some quick, interesting background that most of you don't know about me. Although my kids currently are not enrolled in the Mandarin program, my kids actually started their world language education long before District 67 introduced its partial immersion program. My kids attended Language Stars and took Spanish immersion classes starting at age two. My daughter was actually 17 months old. When my kids were old enough to enter school, I wrote a homeschool-type curriculum and had our babysitter, who was fluent in Spanish, continue that education. My wife and I considered throwing a third language at our kids when District 67 announced this program, but we decided two languages was enough at that time. My point with this story is that I clearly do believe in early exposure to world language. However, some people look at my kids not being in the program and assume the opposite about me. If we all walk away tonight with a little better understanding of each other, then we will have taken a valuable step forward. So what have I heard the community say? Clearly, a variety of opinions exist, as Mr. Semic pointed out. Many parents with children in the program love it, and that's fantastic. These parents don't necessarily want the program changed, they want it to start early, maybe in kindergarten. They don't want to lose minutes per day, and some of them feel additional choice would be great, with Spanish being at the top of that list. I've also heard from parents that are in the program that feel it's okay, but maybe not as great as advertised. Perhaps the content could be improved. They're correct, too. I've heard from parents with children not in the program who are not thrilled with some of the unintended consequences. Some which are parent-driven, some which are structure-driven. Very few are created by the children. Most of them affect the children, though. I've also heard from parents expressing a desire to keep their neighborhood schools, and as Mr. Semic said, I've heard this from parents at Cherokee, Everett, and Sheridan. So there's a lot of different perspectives, and none of them are wrong. On the contrary, every single one of them is valid, and every single one of them has great meaning. The challenge, of course, is how to find a solution where those differing perspectives can not only coexist, but can thrive. So after listening to everyone as best I can, and living in the program for three years, what do I actually think? How do I plan to use my vote? Well, it's important to note that the administration has the job of developing a recommendation, and then the board supports it or sends it back to the drawing board. But I'll share some of my thoughts, so the community and the administration know where my head is. First, one thing I notice when I look at everyone's feedback is that very few people are against world language. Most people that I heard from are unhappy, most people that I've heard of that are unhappy are actually unhappy about the structure and the unintended consequences, not necessarily thinking world language is bad. They talk about equity. They generally don't say world language is a bad subject to teach our kids, and I think that's a really important point as we try to develop a solution. It gives me hope that maybe there is a solution. My next point is about equity. Equity, in my view, is one of the major issues that we're dealing with. I'm hoping for a solution that provides an exceptional educational experience for each and every student, not just at Cherokee, but across the district. After the Mandarin meeting a couple of weeks ago, I stayed around to the bitter end, and I discussed this equity issue with a handful of you. I would summarize the very valid concerns that I heard on this topic from the pro-Mandarin group as this. The concern was that one approach to equity is to dumb down the curriculum so everybody's equal. I call that the lowest common denominator approach. I abhor the lowest common denominator approach. I'll repeat that, in case you missed it. I abhor the lowest common denominator approach. I want equity for all students, and for me, that means we need to find a solution that raises the educational experience for each and every student. The bar needs to be raised for everyone, not lowered. Part of that means being innovative, and part of that means really nailing the basics. I want to stress another phrase I just said, every single student matters. I didn't say most students, I didn't say the majority, I didn't say the vocal minority that both sides seem to think the other side is. I said every student. I had a parent recently tell me that's a nice thing to say, but I really meant it in the context of the broader population. No, I actually really meant it the way I said it. I actually mean it at individual student level. I want every student to have an individualized learning plan that's unique to them. Now I've shifted from talking about an operational issue called Mandarin structure to a different topic called district vision. Can we achieve that vision? I don't know. That's what I'm pushing for. If it can be achieved anywhere, it seems to me like Forest might be the place. We've got the resources, and we clearly have the passion. I'm relatively confident there'll be at least one person unhappy with whatever the longer-term solution is, and that person can certainly throw my words back in my face. They can say the new structure is not exceptional for their child, which I said was my goal. That I've come to realize is the price of transparency. But that's my goal, and now you know it. I may fall short, the board may fall short. I'll try my best. Another item related to equity is how our students' days are structured. As Mr. Semic said, we currently treat our first graders like eighth graders, some of them moving from classroom to classroom all day long. This was done with the best of intentions in the name of integration. Some of you may have first graders, and you may be okay with that, and I respect your opinion, but I'm not okay with that. I don't believe it's healthy for our students. I don't believe it's good socially, I don't believe it's good academically. I don't think it's the best practice for first graders. I had a parent ask me if I had any research to back that statement up. I actually looked for an actual research paper on the topic, and I didn't find one. And I've come to the conclusion that, the reason I didn't find one is, there are few, if any, other elementary schools across the country doing that. So another item that I hope is part of the long-term solution is having integration among the students, but in a nurturing, rational, and consistent environment. A few final thoughts. I spoke of labeling a few minutes ago, and it comes up again and again. Whether it's labeling our kids, yours is a Mandarin kid, mine is a non-Mandarin kid, or whether it's what we call our schools, is it a neighborhood school, an immersion school, a magnet school? I find the topic of labeling to be somewhere between not helpful and counterproductive, so I avoid it. I encourage you to as well. The administration is charged with developing a long-term recommendation and bringing it to the board for consideration. I hope the long-term solution includes a school named Cherokee Elementary School. In my head, Cherokee, Everett, Sheridan, each would be a school that has a spot for every kid in the neighborhood, and every one of those kids can have an exceptional educational experience. Perhaps part of that experience is that Cherokee has a focus on world language, so that all students go there, and they all receive an innovative and best-in-class instruction in some world language. Maybe there's more than one language to choose from. Part of that experience must include excelling in the basics, too, the core subjects. And part of that experience should be that every kid walks away feeling special, because each one is special. Did I just say what I think the answer is? Maybe. Maybe there's another structure that has to bubble up still. I do think we're getting closer. As I said, the administration has the job of developing that long-term solution and bringing it to the board. I know they still are listening, processing, and discerning, and I'm trying to as well. So I'll quickly address the elephant in the room kindergarten. A lot of focus on kindergarten. People asking me, "Will I reverse my vote? Will I not reverse my vote?" There's two petitions going on right now that most of you know about, each with hundreds of signatures, each at least tangentially related to the kindergarten question. My two cents on kindergarten. I want us all to arrive at the right solution for the long term, and I'd like to get there quickly. I don't believe that more short-term attempts at Band-Aids are helping. The kindergarten answer, whatever it is, should fall out of the long-term solution. The administration, Mike Semic tonight, has just said that the target is to bring the board a recommendation regarding a long-term solution, at least for Cherokee this spring, at the April board meeting. We're not talking about six months, 12 months of uncertainty, but literally a few weeks. My assumption and hope is that any recommendation the administration brings to the board for a longer-term solution, it's either going to take five years or nine years, depending on how you count, as kids matriculate from kindergarten through fourth and up through the middle school. I hope that every grade, whether it's K4, K8, is discussed as part of that recommendation or following it very soon. I have some hope that some level of the implementation of the long-term solution might actually start this fall with the new cohort of students, although I realize it will take time to fully implement. But we don't know what that looks like yet, since we don't know the long-term solution yet. Any chance of implementing something in the fall requires finding the long-term solution quickly. That's where my focus lies, and I encourage you to put your focus there as well. How can you help? Many of you are helping by coming to these meetings that the administration is hosting and providing your input. As Mr. Semic said, there's another great opportunity tomorrow, Wednesday, 10:00 a.m. at Cherokee School. Staying positive and focusing on solutions that elevate every student's experience is a great way to help. Carrying people down rarely helps. Really trying to understand other perspectives and working together to find a mutually acceptable solution, it's a lot harder to do, but it's how you best can help. I'll close by thanking each of you again for coming tonight. We've got a great community with passionate parents, really awesome kids, and great schools that I want to make exceptional schools. Thank you for being here tonight, and more importantly, thank you for caring.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burkowski. Are there any other members who would like to address the board on this topic? Seeing none, and I will just repeat that, the lack of decision to speak here does not in any way mean that people aren't very involved and very informed about this topic. We are going to move now to our section on board committees, and the first is the Board Education Committee chaired by Leslie Fisher. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. The Board Education Committee did not meet in the previous month. We will reconvene in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. The next committee is the Board Finance and Operations Committee chaired by Mr. Rick Schuler.
Thank you, Bill. The Finance and Operations Committee did not meet either. We meet two days from now, Thursday, at 10:00. So we'll have a report at the next meeting. We also did finalize the Finance and Operations Charter, which I believe we'll approve later in this meeting.
Thank you very much. The next committee is the Policy Committee chaired by Mr. Mike Burkowski.
The Board Policy Committee also has not met since our last board meeting. We hope to schedule a policy committee meeting in April. Details will be posted on the website.
After I've said how hardworking the board is, apparently, there have been no committee meetings. The next meeting is the Compensation Committee, which I know did meet. Mr. Rob Lemke.
Thanks, Bill. So the Special Committee on Compensation met on March 17th, started at 5:00 with Alan, Bill, Jen, and myself in attendance. We began by discussing a draft memo from Alan and Jen that spoke to the benchmark districts that are historically used in contract negotiations with teachers and staff. As requested at a previous meeting, the memo then determined criteria on which to base benchmark districts. The criteria chosen were test scores, location, and minimum daily attendance. Well, minimum daily attendance. Many of our historical benchmark districts satisfy these criteria, while some do not. Meanwhile, the analysis also identified several other districts that did meet the criteria. The committee will share this memo with the entire board in the near future. We ask that board members make comments and suggestions in a timely fashion. Our intention is to bring a more refined recommendation to the board in a workshop session in April, in order to allow Jen and Alan to start using the benchmarks during the current fiscal year. The committee also discussed a new format that could be used to better inform the board when making compensation decisions. That format is still undergoing some changes, but it too will hopefully be shared with the board in April. The Special Committee on Compensation will meet sometime prior to the April board meeting. The meeting adjourned at 6:30. On the nose.
Thank you very much. The Compensation Committee and Robert are doing a terrific job. Really, the focus is on providing research to the board, so that when we make salary decisions, we have all the information that we need, and also that board members were involved in developing it, so they understand it more. We now move to liaison reports. These are organizations to which board members serve as liaison. The first is the North Suburban Special Education District. Mr. Mike Burkowski.
The NSSCD Governing Board met on March 5th. I was unable to attend that meeting, but I received an update from a fellow NSSCD board member. Highlights of the meeting included, the NSSCD Policy Committee is drafting new fund balance requirements. The vote for this will occur at the April meeting. Our administration has a new fund balance policy for NSSCD, and will be providing their thoughts to me, which I'll bring back to the NSSCD board. This becomes important to our district in the case where NSSCD fund balance falls below its threshold, as under certain circumstances, they could go to the member districts requesting additional funds. There's a defined process for that, and as I say- There's a defined process for that, and as I say, our finance folks are taking a look at that. The NSSCD board also voted to approve the financial report as presented. Currently, NSSCD is in good financial standing. They also voted to approve the calendar. Lastly, in separate but related news, Stevenson High School District 125, Lincolnshire Prairie View Elementary District 103, and Kildare Countryside District 96, all are pursuing a withdrawal from the Special Ed District of Lake County, which is more commonly known as CEDOL. CEDOL is similar to NSSCD. It serves 35 school districts in Lake County, where NSSCD serves about 17. These three school districts, these three school districts have received initial approval to move forward with their departure, although they do have a few more approvals to go. While this does not directly affect NSSCD, it's interesting to note, given Highland Park's recent filing of their intent to leave NSSCD, as we've recently discussed. So we have two large districts making a similar decision pretty much at the same time. Doesn't quite make it a trend, but it does mean we should keep our eye on the situation. I'm confident our administration's already on top of it, but I would ask the administration if you feel that we need to have additional conversations to let the board know so that we can discuss it appropriately. When we recently discussed this topic, we concluded it was in our best interest to continue with NSSCD, at least in the short term. But if this does become a trend, it could certainly adversely affect NSSCD's operations. So we need to keep this item on our radar screen. How this may or may not play into the findings of the Special Ed Audit is not perfectly clear to me either, but there may be some overlap there as well. The next NSSCD Governing Board meeting will be on April 9th. That concludes the report. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much for the report. The next item is the Illinois Association of School Boards, Ed Redd. Bill Anderson, that's myself, and there is no report this month. The next item is the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, Leslie Fisher.
The Curriculum Coordinating Committee has not met in the past month. We will reconvene on Thursday, April 3rd.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. The next item or report is the APT, Leslie Fisher.
The APT Executive Board held its annual District 67 APT meeting on March 12th at Croya. This year, not only were APT members invited, but the entire community was encouraged to join. Mike Semick, our superintendent, was the keynote speaker, and he spoke about mission and vision to a very captivated and participative audience. Elizabeth Lombardo, who is an Everett parent and author and personal coach to Shaquille O'Neal, she was just featured on the Today Show the morning after she spoke at Croya, she shared her suggestions for happiness. And the candidates for the Executive Board for the 2014 through 2016 term were voted in. The next meeting of the APT Executive Board will be held right here, Wednesday, April 9th, at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. We now move to action items.
Sorry, Mr. Anderson, we did skip the Spirit of 67 report that, of course, I can give as well.
Son of a gun. Okay, Spirit, and the next item is the Spirit of 67 Foundation, Ms. Leslie Fisher.
Thank you very much. The Spirit of 67 met on March 11th at 9:00 a.m. Mike Semick spoke, and we discussed the world language review process. In addition, he shared the successes that have already been reached within the Bridges Math Program. In addition, the home tour scheduled on May 8th, which is arguably the Spirit of 67's biggest fundraiser annually. All four homes have been secured, and the volunteers are very excited about not only the homes, but the outdoors that accompany those homes, so hope for good weather on May 8th. In addition, the grant process is complete, and grants will be awarded to recipients in April. Our next meeting is April 9th, or April 8th, rather, at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move to, are there any other liaison reports? Hearing none. We now move to action items. The first item is approval of Finance and Operations Committee Charter. Mr. Schuler.
I believe everybody has reviewed it. It was out a month ago. I did get some good comments from some other board members, as well as Alan and Jennifer. Thank you for that. I think we've got all the comments and the final draft, so I move that we approve it, unless somebody has more questions on it.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the Finance and Operations Committee Charter. Is there a second?
So moved.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schuler? Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Did you say yes?
No, I didn't. I thought somebody might have a question.
Apologies. Is there any discussion of this approval? Mr. Lemke, since you brought it up, do you have anything?
No, no, no. It's just procedure. Now we can start.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
We have a quorum. All right, that should have said motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is the Approval of Policy 7-185 Press Update, Second Reading. Mr. Burkowski?
So approval of 7-185, we talked about it last month for the first reading, and now we're at the second reading. This policy deals with teen dating violence, and it was part of a batch of press suggested edits, which the state sends us periodically. Having a teen dating policy is a requirement, so while these words are not necessarily required, having a policy on the issue is. The administration reviewed this when we received the press packet and felt the policy in front of us now is appropriate, and the Policy Committee agreed with the administration's recommendation.
May I have a motion to approve the policy?
We need to see if there's any discussion, right? Mr. Lemke?
No, you do the motion, and then you do the discussion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Hearing none. May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is Approval of Policies 5210, 5290, and 640, Update, Second Reading. Mr. Burkowski.
I'm going to deal with the first two as a group, and we'll hold the third one momentarily. Policy 5210 and 5290, Second Reading. These two policy changes are very similar. That's why we'll talk about them together. We started this conversation last month, and I'll review some of the items of what we talked about as a reminder. These are important policies. What they're suggesting is that we, as a board, formally delegate some of our authority to the administration, specifically to the superintendent. These two policies deal with how resignations are accepted. Currently, before resignation can formally be accepted, the board needs to vote to accept it. This can take time, and sometimes employees change their mind during that time. In these two policy sections, we are proposing formally delegating the authority to receive and accept resignations directly to the superintendent, meaning the superintendent can accept a resignation without board approval. To be clear, the board does not then get the chance to rescind that acceptance after the fact, if we don't agree. The superintendent's decision becomes final under this proposed language. The benefit of this? People change their minds, and there are many times that we end up in a better place if the resignation can be immediately accepted. By giving the superintendent the authority, the change of heart situations are minimized to the degree possible. The downside of this? There are times, as we talked about last month, that the board may want to actually fire a person instead of accepting a resignation, if for no other reason to make a statement. The effects of firing someone for cause can be different than accepting a resignation. If the board really wanted to fire a person, they cannot go back and undo a resignation if the superintendent has accepted it under this policy change. A question was asked last month at our board meeting if the superintendent has any requirement to discuss it with anybody else on the board, for example, the board president. While our current superintendent, Mr. Semick, may well do that in practice, that's not required in the policy that we're currently written. We could go that route, we could change the language, but it's not. And I think we should discuss that further before actually taking the vote. Lastly, as a clarification, these policies do not affect the board's role in hiring and firing, only as it relates to resignations.
Thank you, Mr. Burkowski. May I have, we're going to have a motion to approve the policy?
Just like to state, as was discussed last month, I still feel the same way that I shared last month, that I prefer to base policy on process, not on the individual. I don't doubt Mr. Semick's collaboration with Bill Anderson or with other members of the board, but Mr. Semick may not always be in this position, so.
Are there other comments?
On April 22nd, that might happen.
We better act quickly.
Is Mike asking for a vote? Mike, I know you said further discussion on that. Mike, you suggested further discussion on the one issue, but are you asking for a vote now on this, with it still being open to further discussion and change?
The, so the administration brought this request for this policy to the Policy Committee, and we discussed it, debated it, and decided to bring it to the full board. I, as one board member, don't necessarily want to push it or not push it. I am promoting the idea of the seven of us having a discussion right now on it, yes. If there seems to be reason to take a vote, we should, but I do think we should have the discussion.
Let me ask this. Ms. Fisher has a concern with the policy. Are there other board members who have other concerns or similar concerns?
My view hasn't changed. You know, I gave the pros and the cons. You summarize them. You know, I fall on the, I would support it. I acknowledge the negative side, but my view hasn't changed since a month ago, or our last discussion.
I certainly agree with Leslie, absolutely in principle. I would say, in this case, the downside is limited. Even if we got in some quack who started to do something, then we fire the quack, you know? So it's different if it was a policy where the negative side exposed us a lot more than I, than I can, I mean, I agree in any case, but I do see the upside of this. And given that we employ the superintendent, I'm willing to vote yes as well.
Can I just ask a question? If we ran into a situation, because I agree with Mr. Lemke, that there are significant upsides with this one particular downside, what would it take to change it to something? I mean, just going through the reading process, I would assume a two-month process. So, given that, I continue to be comfortable with moving forward.
Other comments from board members?
Yeah, just as another member of the Policy Committee, I support the policy as written. I equate this to a board of directors ceding the hiring, or the firing, or, I'm sorry, accepting of the resignation to a CEO. I understand there's a downside relative to accepting a resignation or firing an individual. The bottom line is that individuals are removed from the situation. So I support the policy as written.
May I have a motion to approve this policy?
So moved.
May I have a second? Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Nay.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
So shall I continue with 640?
Yes.
Great. So Policy 640 is the pilot program policy, and we discussed this last month as well. Try to briefly give a recap of it. This was a policy that took us a long time to get to a good place, but we finally got there. This section deals with how pilot programs are implemented and what oversight, if any, is required by the board. The impetus of this discussion, frankly, was the Mandarin program and the role the board did or did not have. And I think, as I mentioned last month, as we talk about the Mandarin program, I think this policy is part of that answer. As we discussed at last month's meeting, an interesting thing happened when we started to look at this policy. The administration kind of admitted not knowing the details of it. They weren't real thrilled with the way it was written. The board wasn't, or at least the Policy Committee, wasn't real thrilled with it either. So neither group really liked what was on the books. We pretty quickly defined two objectives we wanted to accomplish with the new version of the policy. One, we wanted to avoid squashing innovation, and by requiring lots of reports and approvals on the front end of an innovative project, it could easily result in innovation and creative ideas simply not even being started. It's too much hassle. Goal number two, at the same time, we wanted the board not to, we wanted the board to not only be informed, but to have appropriate oversight and appropriate approval function. Defining what appropriate level, what an appropriate level is, became a topic of a lot of debate. After a reasonably long process, we came to a solution that I believe accomplishes both goals. The key elements of this proposed policy are as follows. The administration can start a pilot program anytime they want without formal board approval. The exception to that statement is if a pilot program requires students to be transported out of their normal school building in order to participate, then formal board approval is needed before starting the program. If the program is to continue beyond one school year or cost more than $25,000 in the annual expenses, then formal board approval is required for it to continue. It's expected that the administration, it's also expected that the administration provide the board, either in full session or at the Ed Committee, a review of all pilot programs periodically throughout the year, and the policy suggests what might be included in that overview. So under this policy, the board would have some awareness of all pilot programs. We would vote on programs that affect the neighborhood school boundaries before they start, and we would vote on all others of a sufficient size before they continue into year two. This also allows the administration to start programs and be innovative as much as possible. I sincerely believe this proposed policy is a really nice balance between board oversight and also innovation.
Thank you, Mr. Burkowski, and yeah, this is, I think, a terrific step forward, an example of how the Policy Committee and a district and everyone work together to develop something which I think will be good for, good for everyone, and it was a response, obviously, to things that happened with the world language. So are there other comments or questions from board members?
Just very well done by those of you who took the time to participate in this. I appreciate the specificity of the wording.
May I have a motion to approve Policy 420, First Reading?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a, any, any more discussion? Hearing none. May I have a?
It was Policy 640.
I apologize. Wrong one. We'll start over. May I have a motion to approve Policy 640?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Approval of Policy 420, First Reading. Mr. Burkowski.
As Bill said, this is the first reading, so we'll hear about it tonight, talk about it tonight, but we won't actually vote to approve it tonight. As was mentioned at last month's meeting, the Policy Committee joined with the Finance Committee to review the current fund balance policy, and we ultimately made a few changes which you see tonight in the form of this first reading. The changes include defining a range of 10% to 15% as our targeted fund balance. The current policy simply says a range of 10%, which isn't really a range. We also added a few sentences which will require that the board receive a formal report and presentation if the fund balance falls outside of this 10% to 15% range. If the fund balance falls below the 10% threshold, the report would need to detail the recommended corrective action to be taken to increase the fund balance accordingly. If the fund balance was above the 15%, the report would detail the rationale for the additional funds, including details on the planned uses of funds. additional funds, including details on the planned uses of funds, timing of expenditures, and other pertinent information. In both cases, this report would be a separate document and presentation apart from the budget and the five-year projection. They all tie together, but this would actually be a specific report and presentation regarding the fund balance and its current level. This policy edit will provide the administration more flexibility, as it defines the range a bit broader, 10% to 15%, and does not restrict our ability in any way. But it also provides more oversight and information to the board, as it requires active reporting when the fund balance goes outside the ranges. The hope is that this leads to not only increased transparency related to the fund balance and its intended use, but also a more rational and smooth process for the board during the tax levy request process. That represents the best thinking of the group. I would ask Mr. Schuler, as the Chair of the Finance Committee, if he had any, get that right, if he had any additions.
No, you got that exactly right. I voiced my input last month, so I'm not going to repeat it. We did review it again. I think we fine-tuned it, and I like where it came out. And I think we had others involved, so I think it looks good.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Policy 420, first reading?
I guess I'll move it.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
May I have a roll call vote, please? Discussion, please.
Mike, question, just from a wording perspective. Do we need to be more specific relative to where it says, "In the event that the fund balance falls below this threshold," should we in some way clarify that it's the budgeted fund balance as opposed to the actual dollars? Because I would hate for this to be seen as a requirement that any time a number during the course of normal expenditure or budgeted expenditures falls below or above, that kicks in the need to make a report. Is that, Alan, Jen, is that a fair?
And Alan, I would refer that to you as well. When we talk about the fund balance percentage, maybe you can explain, or Rick, it's a snapshot. Can you explain to us how that timing of the snapshot works? That's related, that's sort of what your question is, Jeff? Am I getting that right?
Yeah, I'm just, I want to make sure that we don't get into a situation where we are looking at the year-end fund balances, but in the further wording, it talks about specifically if it falls below. You may have a situation where you have one-time expenditure that may dip below slightly, even though you know the back half of the tax money's coming in and going to bring it back up. This could suggest that you're...
The biggest issue, I don't know if you're referring to it, is the cash versus accrual when the taxes come in. And that's a huge issue, and it pushes it, it distorts it by a wide, wide margin.
And that's my point, so I...
And we did discuss that. We do it on an accrual basis, not a cash basis, so that it's not, doesn't swing out of that range, which it would do every year, if we did it on a cash basis, right?
Right, exactly.
But I don't know if I'm fully, fully addressing...
No, if it's, if it's an accounting issue, and as a result, we're able to maintain, I just don't want to create a situation where, if there's a swing at any one point, you're having to write another plan.
But I think you're both touching on the right answer. As long as we look at fund balance consistently, which is where we adjust for the early taxes, that's different than the cash flow. The cash flow is much healthier, so I don't think we'll get in that situation. If we start changing of how we're going to measure fund balance, then we might have to talk about that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the wording, the way it's worded, you could look at that and say, anytime the balance in and of itself, money in the bank, falls below a certain threshold or above, you have to...
No, we should be okay.
Write a report.
Appreciate you.
But I actually think...
Thank you.
I'm, I think we should push that a little more, because you could write, "In the event the fund balance calculated on accrual basis," or "The fund balance," you could clarify for after retirements and other people leave. I mean, to insert a word that, and I don't know what that word is, but I think this is the same issue we said before about, if Mike leaves, somebody else is in the chair, if Alan leaves, somebody else is in the chair.
It's also not as simple as it's on a cash basis or an accrual basis, because it's not all on an accrual basis. It's really this big issue, yeah.
I'm just saying, perhaps you change the, in the event that the fund balance, you say, "In the event that the year-end budgeted balance," or something like that. It just, again, keeps an alignment and a commonality with what's above it, that's all.
I guess I'm a little confused by why you say "the budgeted balance," because...
I'm just trying to get alignment with the sentence above it.
What we're really looking at is the actual balance. So, I'm a little confused why you're looking at...
Okay, well, I'm not an accountant, so I'm just trying to make sure that the verbiage is such that it doesn't kick in, in someone's interpretation, a need to continually, three or four times a year, have to write a report, that's all. Just trying to maintain that alignment and that clarity, that's all. If it's not necessary, then let's not do it.
Is there a phrase, and I'm sort of looking at Rick and Jen and Alan, to this point, the point being made, is there a time that we take, is there, is there a time that we take the snapshot of fund balance that we call the fund balance? Is there, is there, is there some phrase that you guys might suggest that helps clarify it for future generations?
Well, we measure, you know, we maintain a five-year projection. I know you're familiar with it from sitting on the Finance Committee, and so that goes out over a period of time. Now, we may look out on the horizon at four years from now and see a dip in fund balance. Maybe it goes below 10%. To produce a report for something that's four years out would be, I think, a waste of resources.
That's not the point at all.
Right.
The point of this policy is the current.
That's why I was thrown off by when you're looking at the budget. I think we're looking at actual...
I wasn't looking at a five-year budget. I'm looking at what it's, just whatever the year-end fund balance is, is what, again, it's just a matter of aligning the verbiage. And the other question I would have, is there a timing relative to when this report needs to be made? So, if you're off, do you wait until the following March to tell us how you could correct it, or is there a requirement that says this has to be done by the October meeting or something along those lines?
Well, and the timing's, I think, a very relevant question, because one of the things we're going to talk about on Thursday are, is a facility, a capital projects plan. That's not developed by myself, or by Jennifer, or by Mike. That's done with a lot of input by a lot of people over a period of time. So, if we look at a fund balance and say, okay, we can invest some money in facilities, that takes time to build that consensus. Where is the best value for that dollar? Same thing on the other end. If we dip below in a given year, a couple of years ago, when interest rates crashed, the state didn't pay money, where we make the cuts is done after a lot of internal discussion and a lot of consensus building. So, the timing of a report could be problematic in the sense that, you know, may not be able to answer it right away, because it's not just one person's decision in the organization. So, you know, we maintain the five-year. We're at a point now, a little bit of the reason that it's risen is because we know, and we've talked about, we have a lot of carpet and asbestos abatement to do. We ran into a problem a couple of years at DPM with that abatement that threatened the start of school. And so, we spent a year really researching abatement products and how to go about that. And we're ready to re-engage in that, but taking that year off meant there was about $300,000, $400,000 that we normally would have spent, that we didn't. You know, so that made it spike up.
But, my, I think our intention was, that's okay, that doesn't matter. If it, we've given it a range, 10% to 15%, if it falls below it, so be it. If it falls, if it goes above it, we get an explanation. It may be complicated, it may be, but it's not going to take that long to respond to it. I mean, that, that's okay. But, you know, if it goes outside the range, we give an explanation. We may not have precise timing of the explanation, but there'll be an explanation, or that's what we're looking for.
And I reiterate, part of what Rick just said, it's important. The policy doesn't say you must be within 10% to 15%. It says if we're outside of the range, the board wants to know about it.
Correct, but it does say, "In the event that the fund balance exceeds the threshold, the report detailing the rationale, including planned uses, timing, and other pertinent information will be provided to the board." We can do that. I just don't know what the timeline you're looking for, for that report, because to do it right, there's a lot of internal discussion that takes place.
I think that's okay. I mean, what we're hearing is the timing won't be exact. You may not know it's, with precision, a lot of people will be involved, that's okay. We had a really good discussion when we, when we talked about what should the range be. It prompts the discussion I think we're looking for, so that's all right.
And I'd add to that, if we're, if we're going outside the threshold, I don't want to say you, I'm not talking, in, 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 any individual, but if we're going outside that range, we as a group should have some idea of why. And that's, that's really what we're talking about. And I agree with Rick, that explaining why shouldn't take too long to pull together.
The unanswered question I think I'm hearing, other than the cash accrual basis on the receipt of funds from the taxes, when, how often? That's, that's a good question. And my thought, and maybe this could be spelled out better, is quarterly. I wasn't thinking annually. The issue of the cash versus accrual is more of a fourth quarter issue, but my thought was, this is a quarterly issue, but we didn't really spell that out, did we?
No, but that, and so, and someone else smarter than I can tell me if I'm getting this right, but I believe the purpose of this first reading is for this discussion, and this is great. And we can make a change, it may delay everything a month, so we do another first reading with different words next month, but if we like this quarterly idea, we could put in that timing, that, that the timing of the report, if the fund balance goes outside the threshold, you know, gets looked at on a quarterly basis, we'd get a report, something like that.
Yeah, I'm throwing it out, quarterly, if, if that's not deemed to be necessary. I don't, I don't want to make this more onerous than it should be.
Yeah, I think, I would suggest we move forward with voting on the first reading, and then let, let it go back to Policy Committee and have this level of detailed discussion in Policy Committee, because it's good, good discussion, but it could be done probably more effectively in a Policy Committee.
You can also table it, if you wished, for the next meeting.
Do I have to make a motion for that?
No, Mr. Anderson just has to announce that they're going to table it. So, it's entirely up to the board what they want to do.
Can I table something?
If that's what the board wishes to do, we're done.
So, what I will suggest, if you're looking for it, is that we take this back and work on it a little bit more. Maybe we can slip it into the Finance Committee meeting on, later this week, if we have time, and maybe we can't, but we can come back next month with a little tightened-up version.
I think we're close enough where we could probably slip it in and get her done, as they say.
Okay, and we are going to table the approval of Policy 420 for further discussion in Finance and Policy Committee. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of human resource items, which include hiring, resignations, terminations, family and medical leave, absence, and change in status. Mr. Simick?
I recommend that the board approve the HR report as presented.
Mr. Anderson, while we're talking about tabling items, given that our time prior to this meeting was small, and we'd had a lot of, I think, meaningful discussion, would there be an opportunity to table this item? Obviously, we had a large group, and we wanted to make sure we started on time, but I felt a little rushed towards the end to reach closure. I'm not sure we got there. Would that be an option?
I've just learned that I can table anything, apparently, but before we...
With board approval.
In all seriousness, Board Member Clemmison has asked about the possibility of tabling on this, this agenda item. Are there other board members who'd like to weigh in on this, on this item?
I would actually ask if we're going to consider this, whether or not, I mean, there is one contract we want to really table, and the other four we're willing to approve, I imagine. And so, is there any benefit to the District to separating the two groups, so that some group has action tonight?
The issue is, these are all things from executive session, and trying to pull them out in public session, I think, is difficult. It may be beyond my parliamentary credentials. But there's no attention here to...
Could Mike speak to that?
Mike, could you speak to this?
Mike, is there, is there a danger to tabling everything that's in this report?
I think that's a good question. One of the things that, that is problematic about tabling some or all of this is our ability to move forward on some, you know, really significant decisions that we have to make. And, you know, they are time-sensitive, and frankly, we are later on these than I would like to be right now. And to table these for, for, to come, to visit this even later, I think puts us in a less favorable position in, to make other decisions.
To be clear, if these are tabled, then none of the positions can be posted?
The practice of the, the District is that, like, say, if we're going to hire a teacher, for example, that person is engaged, and, you know, so, for example, we hire somebody in, in August, we bring a teacher in in August, the board actually approves that at their September meeting. In this case, we're talking about somebody that is, is not in that position, and so, for, for some of the folks on the agenda, we would be just fine, and for at least one, we would not.
And can we separate the items, or was the answer no? Can we separate the items, or is the answer no?
I, I don't know why you can't, but I'm frankly not familiar enough with Illinois law on these things to provide an educated opinion on that. I don't know if Alan and Jen are able to.
Anyone in the audience? I'm sorry. Okay.
I, I feel that there was an important point that came up towards the latter part of our discussion, and we were concluding before this, that affects the voting of this.
Can I ask a procedural question? I realize there's a respect issue to the audience, but I also realize the majority of this meeting is over. Is there anything stopping us from taking a vote to go into executive session and continue the discussion? And apologies to the audience, that would mean that we would leave and you would...
Okay. Well, that's, that's, I think, actually brilliant, but I, could I take it one other step further? What if we finish the public, the rest of the public agenda? We will table this, and then we'll go into executive session after that. Then we would reconvene, of course, but there wouldn't be anything to do at that point, to adjourn, oh, and to vote, correct.
So, to the public, that would mean we would move this item to the end of the agenda, we'd finish our regular meeting, we would then vote to go into executive session, you would like to go home, we'd come back at some point and vote on this issue, which is somewhat nebulous to you, anyway, and that would be the meeting. Is that, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, and I think that's actually well-stated. So, the decision right now is to table Action Item E, approval of human resource items, and we will now move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes approval of disbursements, minutes of a regular meeting, minutes of an executive session, minutes of a board workshop, minutes of an executive session, minutes of another joint board workshop, and disposable of audio, disposable of audio recordings. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a board member would like removed for further discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmison?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is FOIA requests. We have FOIA requests from Ms. Esther Castellano, the Better Government Association, from Ms. Jennifer Harpold of Lake Forest, and from Mr. Brian Anderson of Lee's Food Service Parts and Repairs. No relation. Next item is announcements. Monday, March 24th through 28th is spring break. Monday, March 31st, 2014, school reopens. Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014, Board of... Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014, Board of Education meeting, and Mr. Simic's announcement on the World Language Program. The next item on the agenda is adjournment, wait, no, wait.
To executive session.
Adjournment to an executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session for discussion of human resource items?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are now in executive session, and we'll adjourn to the Seminar Room A.